I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under our individual liberty and justice for all. All right. Oh, do we have any changes to the agenda in notation or? I have none. Everybody like fifty?
Danny, I'll move to approve tonight's agenda.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous. Delegation, Mr. Peterson, I have none this evening. Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Any questions, comments? Other spending.
Okay, we just got our county reports last week and then they said it's an updated late Friday, so kind of going through this week and hopefully gonna be an awesome event happening after you guys next time.
Okay. Well, the chair would entertain a motion to approve.
I move to approve the consent agenda. One second.
All in favor? Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we'll move into public comment. Public comments.
We were wondering if you guys have an update on the Friday decision.
You want to go ahead and say your name and?
Sorry, my name is Megan Damon. I'm looking at the follow up of the conversation of plans for future school. It was discussed on Friday when I was at a meeting and what's the next steps in the process?
So we have, and I don't feel bad saying this because it is on the agenda, we do have an update from that meeting as part of our agenda.
Okay.
Yeah. Wordwork self update.
Okay, and I do have an electronic comment. And so this is from Jolene Casadillas, Club Director for Club KB Volleyball. It was included in your board packet, but I'm going to read it in record for anyone who's watching. Good evening, school board members. My name is Jolene Casadillas and I'm writing this email to represent Club KB Volleyball. So I understand new stipulations are being discussed regarding outside entities who use Kybe School Facilities, as well as facilities used to be speed rates, meeting again by saying thank you for the wonderful working relationship Club KB Volleyball has had with the Kybe School District since two thousand and twelve. As we've worked together, our club has had the pleasure of working with some amazing young people to help build their volleyball skills, develop them athletically and socially, as well as create opportunities for new and lasting friendships. It's been a wonderful experience that we hope to continue for years to come. Just want to take a few minutes to explain why we operate the way that we do. When we began this club ten years ago, we quickly learned how expensive club volleyball is in our region. We learned about the many costs that simply run a club. Feels like there are fees upon fees upon fees. In the volleyball world, those fees come from the region, the officials, the school facilities, among other things. Their uniforms and equipment to purchase and tournaments to pay for. Unlike other sports, these fees are due upfront and most have to be paid before the end of December. Knowing this, knowing about the low income families in our area, our club worked really hard to come up with fees that were the bare minimum. We also offer the opportunity for families to make a few payments as well as find sponsors for private girls who want to play but can't afford it. Our fees are at least half of any other club fees in our area. It's probably more like a third or a quarter of other clubs. However, the fee still seems overwhelming and high for the families in Benton City. Because of this, we struggle to get enough Kybe youth to play for our club. We have to open it up to youth outside of Benton City so that our Benton City kids who want to play can still play. We've always catered to Benton City kids to come out and play for our club. All kids have to try out in order to see what team they fit on best. And some kids we are not able to take, but we always make sure the Benton City kids are on a team. We do not have teams. We do not use kids from outside of Benton City. All of our coaches are volunteers and make nothing when they coach for Club KB. Most of our coaches are Kybe alumni and do it because they love the game and want to see Kybe continue to have success in the volleyball program. We completely understand that everything is going up in crisis these days and we are happy to pay those adjusted raises. We're worried if the school board decides that anyone who uses their facilities has to be a Kybe kid that our club will have to fold. We simply will not have enough Kybe kids to even field teams. This is so unfortunate for the few Kybe kids that do want to play and can't afford to go to another club in the area. Hope you will change, take these things into consideration when you make decisions about who can and cannot use the facilities as well as determining how you raise your fees. So I'm sure you are aware raising your fees will cause us to have to adjust our fees as well, which will affect our Kybe families. If you have any questions or would like further clarification, please feel free to reach out. Jolene Casadillas, Club Director for Club KB Volleyball.
And I believe we'll probably address most of those in part of our agenda.
Yes.
Okay, well, we'll move on to unfinished business then. Policy forty-one ten, the Citizens Advisory Committee and Task Force. Read, this is the third reading, so we'll look for an approval. Do you have any comments or? Or? Changes, suggestions? Everybody's happy with it? Okay, well, the board or the chair would entertain a motion for approval.
I'll move to approve policy forty-one ten, Citizen Advisory Committees and Task Forces.
One second. All those in favor? Aye.
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 Aye. Okay, thank you. And then likewise, we'll move to policy forty-one twenty, school support organizations. Also for approval. Are we happy with that one too? Excuse me, speaking of allergies.
I'll move to approve policy forty-one twenty, school support organizations.
All second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, and then likewise, policy fifty-five fifteen, our workforce secondary traumatic stress. Then including one minor change, which I applaud Julie for proposing a more precise language. I'm good with it.
I'll move to approve policy fifty-five fifteen, workforce secondary traumatic stress as amended.
All second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, and then we will move, Mr. Peterson will give us an update on the curriculum adoption cycle.
Yeah, and thank you, Mr. Burton. The main point of this is simply to have the board see what is the most up to date for curriculum review cycle sent out in the board packet. For twenty-one, twenty-two, this past school year, our planning, study and development led us to the adoption of the new K five English Language Arts and Reading. And then for twenty-two, twenty-three, our planning shifts over to seven, twelve math. Kind of an odd discrepancy because we have seven, twelve math and then six through twelve English Language Arts. I'm not a hundred percent sure on why the one, one grade level difference between math and ELA. I can't say it's just the way it's always been, so that's, that's what our publishers have anyway. So I did send the board couple emails ago, just a request if anyone wishes to serve on those adoption committees, that we certainly would welcome that. I have had contact with the secondary ELA teachers as well as our, our union, just to let them know that these adoptions are going to be happening. So we're going to be having a full call to committee. I would say towards the end of October, making requests of vendors to be able to send us some samples and then get started on the process. It should be it should be, it will be a very similar process to what we went through with the, the K five. I've always noticed, and this is just a personal notice, that for some reason secondary, because I think it's a specific subject area, tends to go a little quicker. There's not as much breadth as, as it is when you're really talking about K five reading. Reading is a big thing. So I think it'll be a little bit more focused, perhaps a little bit quicker. We've also put out requests to other superintendents in the region that are going through the same either adoptions or who have gone through adoptions in these two areas in the last year, just to see if we can pick pick up on what their conversations were all about and avoid some of the, either some of the pitfalls or get some of the, the positives that came through their processes, so. This is not an action item. It's just to, to let you see where we're at it again. You know, following COVID, when I submitted this to the board for the first time last spring, you see we shortened this to really get to a five year cycle opposed to a six year to try and make up for that year, year and a half when we didn't do much in, we have curriculum adoption whatsoever. So hopefully, all of our core curriculums will be adopted by the end of twenty twenty-six. And then where you see twenty-six, twenty-seven is a blank, that's where you're going to see that K five ELA reading up for review, not necessarily a full blown adoption, but at least for review and kind of gauge where we're going with that curriculum, if there are any updates or things like that will be considered. So information only as far as this is concerned.
I can't remember if I requested to be invited to those committee meetings, but I appreciate that.
Okay, I will make sure you are on the list. And of course, tonight is not your only chance to volunteer. If you decide in the future you want to be a part of this, I'll make sure and get those meeting dates out to the entire board.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. And of course, they'll be available for public review once they're
Once we come up
narrow down the traces.
Yeah, once we come up with our, our top one or two, depending on how close vote is, they will be put on public display at the district office for quite frankly, as long as they need. Statute says a minimum of two weeks. I think our, our reading, we went a well over two or three months even with that one, just to make sure that people have plenty of chances to get so. Same will be true with this.
And I would just like to throw in that I like not to limit the staff, you know, high school wants a certain curriculum where they think a certain program's better for geometry than algebra, that there's some flexibility in choosing different publishers depending on what we feel is best for that.
Absolutely. Appreciate that very much.
Okay, we will move into new business then. Okay, Carl Perkins Grant Assurances for twenty-two, twenty-three.
So what you see at this point, and for those members of the board, this is their first time to see it, these are simply the the grants made available to us from CTE. This was all prepared by Keely Gant, who is our Walk with CTE Director over at the ESD. So this funds all of our CTE programming for the year. It's just a breakdown of things that we've asked for. It's a pretty standard representation. I would be happy to, to get any more in or get any more questions answered for you if you need. Keely was, could not be here tonight to answer any questions, but to be honest, this typically hasn't been much of a, much of a, an in-depth conversation, even the same requirements as we've had in the past. So yeah, that's where we're at with Perkins Grant.
So this is up for approval. Is there any questions or comments? It's a lot of stuff to wade through. I know it's like fifteen, fifty pages or so. I would entertain a motion for approval.
I'll move to approve the girl person grant for twenty-two, twenty-three. I'll second.
Okay, moved in second and all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Mr. Peterson, that moves us to the board workshop update.
Yeah, just wanted to follow up and get any, obviously, ask for any feedback from our workshop with Mr. Plager from DA Davidson on, on the previous Friday. I know he has begun working on some of the issues that that we had for him as takeaways, and then I wanted to give the board, of course, an update as to what some of the takeaways were on our end. So the first thing that, that I need to report is one of the things I said that I was going to do was look at that Form D one, which is the study and survey grant application, and that is the application that comes in that we have to request, but if we apply for this grant, then we can get, get that paid for for them to come in and do a study survey or facilities and everything. One of the things that I found is that it does require for calculation to grant the October first head count. So I'm going to delay applying for that until after we have the October first head count. I think it will be in our, to our advantage to have this year's October head count as opposed to last year's. So with that, we've gone on to, we scheduled our first community meeting and discussion of levy rates and length. We're going to tie that into our first meeting is going to be tied into our October fourth community council meeting. So following this meeting, I'll put out a note to Molly at our, at the ESD, our communications director, to get things out in English and Spanish on Facebook as well as our website, saying that the October fourth community council meeting will focus on levy rates. And then have a primary discussion around length of those, of those length, whether we want to go to a two year, three year, four year levy. And some of the discussions around rates that Cory shared with us and what we expect to, to achieve with that. Thought it'd be very nice though to, to put that into a meeting that already existed. And then we do have plans, we approved this evening our, our district translator, our new district translator, Jenny. So I'll be working with her to set up a Spanish meeting for our Spanish speaking families. Again, the same idea. How do you feel about our levy rates? How do you feel about the two year, three year, four year options? And try and provide them with some of the same information that Mr. Plager gave to us during that community, community meeting. So that's our, that's our schedule for the first part of October. We'll schedule that meeting in Spanish. I know Mr. Thornton said he was going to locate the, the map of the K eight block. And then kind of in relation to both of that, quite frankly, and again, it kind of takes us into, to see because it, it kind of covers both of those things as we were going to have a discussion about when would the board like to have a follow up work session for those financials to work on kind of setting a, a vision for rates and length of time. Of course, I would have to refer after. And then also setting up a, a meeting, going back up to number, letter D, kind of looking at our policies around curriculum adoption. So we have a couple of different workshops to, to work through tonight. My suggestion would be that we do something along the lines on the Friday, the fourteenth, Friday, the twenty-first and Friday, the twenty-eighth. Any combination of those two, but probably Friday, the twenty-eighth, October, for our workshop to update the facility levy rate, any of those types of financial discussions, and then either the fourteenth or the twenty-first to review our adoption policies and procedures. Obviously not a decision to, to make tonight, but I want to offer and like I said, skipping ahead to, to let her see a little bit is just to get those dates out. There's potentials for work sessions. So you can all check your calendars after we're done and go from there. I really think the, the proper thing for us to do when, you know, we have to set the, the levy, levy length rate and all those things prior to then moving forward with a hard and fast decision about well, obviously say the levy, but then making a decision as far as whether we move forward with a capital bond, whether we move forward with a standard bond and what kind of a timeframe during the next calendar year during twenty twenty-three, we'd be looking at that.
Let's make a decision now when to put it on the ballot.
Correct, that's, that was, yeah, that's my point there, which of the dates in twenty twenty-three the board would like to go with for that.
So we think it'll workshop at noon like we did before or?
Again, I don't want to, I don't want to hamstring anybody by saying a specific time. We know that Fridays typically work better for people. I just wanted to give some dates upfront as a little bit more in advance so that you guys can check your calendars. See what types of conflicts you have, if any. There is no time of day mandate, so for those of you that, that have calendars, you need to check out, that was my purpose in asking for that. And of course, if any other date during the week works better, I'm more than open to that. We typically have looked at Fridays as kind of the best day. But I'm certainly open to any other options once you check your calendars. The fourteenth, by the way, is a non student day in Kybe and many of the school districts around the area being that it's a teacher professional development day.
Okay.
And when we have heard back from Mr. Plager, is that right, about how crucial validation is and second thing was when we would see a state matching funds.
The matching funds, excuse me, that was on my list, matching funds. Our regional, south, our eastern Washington regional rep is working on that right now. In fact, Heidi was going back through documentation. One of the things that, that he asked to see was a resolution of completion for the modernization of the high school in two thousand and seven. So we, we were successful in finding a ninety-one page document from two thousand and seven. We sent him probably eighteen pages of it. And we didn't include the page he was looking for, but he showed us an example, so we're going to go through those ninety-one pages, try and find it, send it to him. He just said it would aid him in, in those calculations, but he's been rather diligent about it. So I did have these back and forth with Scott Black at OSPI, who who emailed this gentleman, Mark Brown is his name, and said I should work directly with him. So Drew and I and Heidi are all on the email chain going back and forth looking for stuff, so. And yes, we will have it definitely by the time that we have that final finance meeting. I'm hoping to have it, quite frankly, but it
So does the architect put in an input that we're resolution or is that a school board or school?
It was the, it was basically the resolution, which in two thousand and seven would have been the board at the time would have accepted that all of the, the modernization has been completed at the high school. And then once the board acted on that, then it became an official date.
So would that theoretically be a year after the completion? Because if you get a year, it would warranty, basically. I just wonder, I have, just from my own knowledge.
I think it, I think it should start the day that the board accepts it.
Okay.
Yeah, the punch list is done and all those types of things. I always, I giggle a little bit whenever I hear buildings having a warranty and you're right. Our buildings always have a warranty when we update from the, from the contractors, but anyway, when we get that, we will find that and get that to them.
Okay.
So.
Yeah, just for my own knowledge.
Yeah.
I'm, I, I would expect the architect would probably drive it like for a final payment or, or the construction.
Yep. So realistically, what we're, what we're really talking about is we're just setting the stage for the levy first, and then we'll be moving towards the discussion around potential dates to run either a capital levy or a full blown on or the facilities improvements in the order that the facilities committee presented at the last meeting, so. There's just a few steps in, in between.
So I just, the, the, the match funds, is that what you're helping to do to the elementary school?
The, what we're doing is the matching funds are what the board is asking, asking us to find out about because obviously, if the, the community is going to be asked to provide a certain amount of funding, if we can get matched for that, then of course our community contribution gets, goes down as the state match goes up. So there are certain qualifying conditions and part of that is what our regional person from OSPI was looking for, some of the things that the board had done back in two thousand and seven.
And there are any of those rates, even though British obviously went out?
No, it's, it's more a matter of there's a certain amount of time that has to pass in certain improvements and capital facilities, so they just have to make sure that enough time has passed to give us sufficient. Or it could be that it might come back to the board and say, we want to wait for another two years because instead of two million dollars, we could qualify for ten million dollars. Well, eight million dollars might be worth waiting a couple of years for. So that's the information that we're going to have for the board at the, at the next work session. And of course, that work session will be open to the public again, or go out on an agenda just like last time.
Will it also be in place at that, that's the school page?
Yes.
Okay, let's move on to new facility youth rates. Rob?
Right. So this is the project that Pete and I kind of took on, kind of asked me to take a look at. Our rates had to change since two thousand and seven. So things going up, our cost of, you know, paper towels to a paper when people use the facilities going up. The biggest one was our custodial. So when we have an event, we had to have two hours custodial. And once they open a door or anything, we have to pay them for two hours. We weren't even covering the cost of paying our custodians. So what I did is I took a calculation of all of our overtime rate for our custodials staff and then did an average plus the benefits fees to come out and make a new rate. The goal of this was not to make money off people using our facilities, but rather try and cover our costs. For like our non-community, nonprofit virtual groups, we really raised the rates a lot. The biggest change was just to, when we host games here for our big kids, AU and Club Bible. Biggest thing is we want to make sure that as many kids of our kids are using our facilities as possible. So we're trying to have eighty percent of our students or eighty percent of the teams be from Kybe, the kids on the team, so. That way our kids have priority. We're not trying to gouge them for practice. They're still a dollar day. That's kind of been standard practice. It's just when they're hosting so that when we do have to replenish the toilet paper, the paper towels and everything.
Which I assume they charge for anyways, correct Drew?
What's that? Yeah. Yeah, they charge entry. They charge the team.
Right.
But they have concessions.
Right.
So we're just trying to honestly just cover our costs of being in there.
So wasn't the eighty percent, isn't that been on our form all the time?
I think there was some percentage. I couldn't find what it was. I think it was just maybe majority.
I think it was a much, for some reason, it sticks in my head, a majority, so.
Yeah, I also think, and Drew and I have talked about this, this doesn't preclude us from making exceptions for people who are trying their hardest to include our kids, and if it's a difference between including some of our kids and, or in, and not hitting the eighty percent, but then whacking the whole thing. Obviously, we, we want to be black and white, but there's got to be a little bit of gray area too. So we don't want to cut off our nose to spider face. So we don't want to cut off our nose spider face.
So maybe more. I think that eighty percent is gonna be um difficult or our club teams to meet, and so. I, um.
Maybe.
I I just know the benefit that my daughter receives from being able to play and um. I I would. I don't know if we could, because we do want to incentivize them to go out and refer this many Ky B players as we could. If that could be based upon the percentage that they are able to get, maybe that could be their discount. So like, let's say they were able to get fifty percent of their kids. Then maybe they could have a fifty percent discount on the fees. I don't.
Well, what we could do is eighty percent of the students must be from, say that it should be from. You know, we can use a little. A little launch.
And this is more for, that's more for the practice piece really, because they're they're getting the dollar a day discount. Um, but yeah, I'm open to changes.
Well, I I guess what I'd like to understand a little bit better is how much is going to cost her. You know, like our club volleyball team, how much more?
What what will the difference be between this year and last year?
I don't know how much they miss the gym, how much they have their tournament. I don't know. Um, so I think a better understanding on how much more we're increasing their costs.
Okay.
Yeah, and I don't see that here compared to, I and I don't, I don't know what it was prior to seeing this.
See, they had the dollar a day every, that's. Yeah.
Okay.
The only times.
The only thing that would change would be when they would host an event.
Host an event and charge an admission. And so on those specific days, according to board policy. Um, if you're if you're charging an admission, then we do charge. Uh, I think it go goes from instead of fifty six dollars to a hundred and twenty five dollars a day. Which is still significantly less than any of the big schools in the region or a, quite frankly, many of the small schools either.
Yeah, I looked at other schools around us and it was a hundred dollars a power, so we are significantly cheaper still.
But if the board would like, we can come back with an impact statement as far as specifics, um we've met with. A few representatives from different different clubs already. Um, just to have the conversation, but we can certainly take a more in-depth look at it and get for the for the next four being.
Maybe.
Yeah, I would like.
Some old numbers versus new numbers, right?
So.
Alternative mervage. Right, anything else? Looks like you did a good effort, though.
Yeah.
We've had lots of conversations, I mean, it's been a very good topic, I think that. Um, you know, when the, when the, when I came back to the board and said, I think our policies are good, we just need to would forth our policies. And then look at our rates, I think that's really where we're headed, um it really is kind of one of those. We're almost trying to put toothpaste back in the bottle in some cases, because some some things have just never been set for quite as quite a long time. But we'll keep working on it.
Yeah, fifteen years and we haven't changed the rates and we give a three percent raise every year or whatever.
So, yep. Absolutely.
Okay, well, we'll move on to board comments.
Um, I'll just make the comment that I um. Think it's important that we stay consistent with our um. Procedures for public comment during board meetings, that you know, the public comment lasts for three minutes and that um. You know, whoever would like to comment states their name, and then that's the only time for our public comment. Um, and I think we need to communicate that a little more clearly, so that people attending understand that, so.
Okay. I'm taking, yeah.
I can't find anything to complain about.
I was at the homecoming football game, it was a good time, it was nice, it was nice to see. Normal back, it was a lot of fun to. To watch the kids and see them come across in their, you know, fancy dresses and all that fun stuff, so that was good, and it. Appeared as though since I was relatively close to nice, well, it was nice to see them coming and going at homecoming and going in and.
Mm-hmm.
And everybody piling out of there like it used to be, and that was, that was well fun, just think that maybe we're. Getting back to some sense of what it's supposed to be.
Completely agree.
So that was fun, the game was good, can't help it, be happy when you win the homecoming.
Yeah.
All right, well, no other comments, we will. Uh, go into executive session pursuant to RTW. Oh, I'm skipping right on.
I know he's talked a lot.
That, yeah. I think that's another hint to maybe wrap things. And actually, just. Yeah, three minutes, um, just a few items, first off, I want, oh, I did send an email out. But we our FTE count for September was thirteen hundred and seventy students. And so. Um, from the first part of the month, when we were first doing our our models in addition and. And Rosario was able to meet with Amelia, of course, this is the first time that we've done a count with our new power school system. Um, we made quite a jump from their initial, um it's always important to go back and then. Make sure the numbers are right, so we we were able to be at a eight, thirteen seventy, historically, we have jumped another. Thirty, forty, fifty kids, by the time we hit that official October count, which is really, that's the big one, um that's the one that. We're waiting on for the D one as well as as that's our our set amount then for the next six months, so. We anticipate that continuing to go up. Um, just a note, um and I know David is listening, so we can, we can thank him, we finally got notification on our ECF grant. Um, which was awarded to Ky B School District in the amount of one hundred and forty one thousand dollars. And all of that money will go now uh for computer purchases, so. Uh, we will order our computers and at that point, we will be one to one. Uh, laptops in hand of every student, grade six or twelve. Um, guaranteed one to one, and we still have a lot of computers down at the elementary, so. Um, that's a really good thing, um when all is said and done, uh three hundred and twenty five computers, I think will end up costing. About a hundred and forty three thousand, so out-of-pocket expenses, two thousand dollars for three hundred and twenty five computers, which is a great deal. Um, David is working on a cycle, a rotation cycle. Um, so that as students at the high school graduate. We grab their computers from them as they walk across the stage and on the road, but. Um, and then we will turn around and those will be then going to the next uh group as they come in with. Probably some filler, because as you know, um, you know, seniors always have are the smallest number of the four grades to high school, so. Six readers coming up are a little bigger, so we'll we'll augment that, but he's working on that and checkout processes in the whole nine yards, so. That's a very good thing. Um, and then just an update on a couple of cool things that are happening. Um, we have career, uh construction career day. Which uh is something that's a vocational program that's been overseen through Tri-Tech in the past years. Hasn't happened for for three years, and so that's gonna be back this year, it's October fourth, it's out of the fairgrounds. We're gonna try and get some some kids out there to that. And then even more. Impressive, quite frankly, is we're gonna have Ky B Day at CBC on October twenty first. All of our seniors are gonna get transported out to CBC to take a look at their vocational programming, their academic programming. And um it's a day just for us, in fact, when. Uh, that was presented to us at the superintendent's uh meeting at Tri-Tech uh last week. The CBC folks were, CBC folks were very impressed, thanks to Elise P. at the high school for really being the liaison for that. Um, it's always nice to hear other school districts, especially the big ones, be invited to participate in a program like Ky B does. Um, so that's gonna be October twenty first. And really, that's that's what I've got for you as far as an update goes, pretty good stuff, though.
He on the construction career day, is that open to any kid?
That's it's regional and yes, it is open to any kid.
Okay.
Um, typically, I think are we aim at our upperclassmen, juniors and seniors, just because those are. Those are kids who could also go to Tri-Tech and have access, however, I think it's great for freshmen to sophomores to go out there to get an idea of make some goals. They might want to achieve when they become juniors and seniors.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, now I guess we can move into our executive session. I'm in such a hurry for. Uh, personnel matters for thirty minutes, still business to follow, and then we'll be adjourned. Thank you for coming.